So we will start our meeting, special meeting of the governing board on Tuesday, January 21st, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Our meeting tonight will go from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It's called order. Roll call will show that all board members are here. And Ms. Frank, if you would, do the adoption of the agenda.
I move we adopt the agenda. Very second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. Alright, so the, I'm trying to count over there, but the reserved seats there are for those that are going to want to speak. So if you want to speak, sit there and when you're done speaking, then save that spot for someone else to sit in. But I think there's just enough seats, I'm not sure. So, who wants to start? Jim?
Dr. Finch. Mr. Miglerino is going to start with a guest and probably going through his PowerPoint and go from there.
And just one more thing, do you want us to have questions asked as you're going through it, or do you want to wait until you're all the way through? Which do you think would work better?
My preference would be, President Ordway would be to have this as interactive as possible because it is a study session, so just so that nobody loses a train of thought. I mean, while keeping order, right?
Right, absolutely.
I certainly do not object to the questions as we're going through the presented information.
Okay, so for all of us, that's for all of us, but for you guys, if there's something that he says and you want it clarified, or a little bit more, a little bit more information, then make sure you're sitting over there and then you can ask your questions. Yes?
Can we move like where we at? Or can you sit over there right now?
You could sit there right now. Just don't hog the seat, that's all I'm saying. Because everybody wants a turn. And when you guys do get up there, make sure you speak into the microphone so we can hear you. Because I can't hear a word you're saying, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I'm just saying, it's okay, there's not like 100 people here, I think you'll be fine.
So, oh, I keep shouting into this thing. So Mrs. Ordway, if someone has a question or they need a point clarified, they would then just need to step forward to the podium?
To the podium, speak directly into the mic and gently give us your question. Just say.
I'd say don't be shy, but you already don't seem like a shy.
Are the mics cutting out again already?
Alright, President Ordway, members of the board, Dr. Finch. So, just for, as a matter of introduction, Dr. Skip Brown is here. He is the consultant that we have commissioned to help us through the boundary initiative. So I wanted to thank him for his time, not only tonight, but as we've gone through the process. Our demographer has committed to being here, Mr. Rick Brammer. He is not here yet, but he also was coming from a commitment from a neighboring school district. So he did mention that he may not be able to get here and depending on, you know, traffic, that could adjust when he actually gets here. And right on cue, Mr. Brammer, we saved your seat up front. So this is Mr. Rick Brammer from Applied Economics. The, I think just it's important to note the, you know, a couple of things. First, this is a study session, so that's why I think having this be interactive allows us to do, to share more information than maybe in a more, in any other setting that we could have. And I do want to make sure, a point of clarification, some of the numbers are not going to track from previous presentations. The reason for that is annually, we commission a study that Mr. Brammer produces for us. What's new this year is he created an interim report. Because he does this for many districts throughout the state, he created an update on the student enrollment projections for us, and he provided that information within the last two weeks. And so we've included that in these presentations. We hope that doesn't cause more confusion because it doesn't materially change much of the information here. It just provides more updated information. So now we're using all the information from one year. In the reports that we've shown before, I think there was some confusion over trying to make sure, you know, where students actually attend, where they actually reside, and the different years that were included in the report because we did not have it all from one, one report that Mr. Brammer put together. So, so we were looking at boundary projections with current year numbers, but we're looking at attendance information from the previous year's demographic report, which was about six months old. So now with the interim report, it allows us to look at projections for this year, which will coincide with the boundary projection information that we were already previously sharing with you. So again, I don't want that to cause more confusion because it doesn't materially change anything, other than it has the most updated information possible for us to, to make an informed decision about high school boundaries. So with that, I'll jump into the presentation. I'm just going to skip through the statutory and board policy information, just because we've shared this previously, but just for anybody that may be watching this or seeing it for the first time, there are some guiding regulations and board policy that we do follow in both Arizona law statute 15, 341, section 37, and then our governing board policy, JC. We've talked previously about school boundary guidelines. There was a survey that was done at the beginning of 2019, in which we asked for some input, ultimately from the community, from some guiding principles that this board actually worked on related to school boundaries. And as a result of that, we have bolded the information that the community also valued. Those were some of the guiding principles that helped us develop the proposed boundary changes that we looked at. Not only the elementary boundary changes that the board approved at the last board meeting, but also the proposed high school boundaries that we're going to discuss this evening. Just an update on the input process, so now we've added some additional opportunities. Again, the study session this evening, we are targeting for the high school boundary proposed changes to be considered on January 28th. That doesn't mean that they're going to be voted on, that means that there will be a formal vote that will take place on the 28th, unless the board decides to act in a different capacity. I want to spend a little time on this slide because I further delineated what the objectives were. So the primary objective has not changed, in which we were trying to create a sustainable, balanced, projected enrollment over all five high schools. But I wanted to make sure that it took a little bit of time to kind of further define that, that this includes delaying the need for high school number six. We've talked before, the Tulsa High School just opened a new high school this year, it's probably going to be well over $110 million for them to build that high school. So any delay in building a high school would have a significant savings to the taxpayers because we would probably not receive any support for building a new high school from the school facilities board. Again, due to the capacity that we have collectively of all five high schools. We also wanted to create high schools that have enough students to maintain all the offerings. So we pride ourselves on having comprehensive high schools, and it takes a certain number of students to make sure that we have a comprehensive list of offerings for students.
I have a question. Could you explain in a little more detail what happens when enrollment declines at a high school in terms, I think my mic is cutting out, in terms of staffing and being able to provide programs at that high school?
Yeah, so I'm not the expert on this matter, but Ms. Moffett is here, so, but suffice it to say, we staff based on the total number of students, and it's a mathematical computation in which we divide the total number of students by a fixed number. In the case of high schools, I believe it's 27 and a half students that we project, and that determines the number of teachers that are allocated. The schools, each high school then looks at that total number of teachers and it tries to determine all of the offerings that they can provide for, for all of the classes that have been selected by students. So in the case where you have a larger number of students, you're going to, you know, just kind of the, the way the math works out, you're going to have more teachers to be able to have more offerings. So you might have more students that would be in some of the smallest classes that we have, maybe, you know, an AP physics or something of that nature, I'm just making that up, but in which we might have only a select number of students that, that are ready to take that class. The more students you have, the more opportunity you have to be able to have enough kids to make that a class. If you have too few students, then the class can't make because you would be giving up a section for that teacher. So suffice to say, the more students you have, the more economy of scale you can get in terms of allocating those teachers across all of the offerings of a student. I don't know if Ms. Moffett wanted to offer something.
He answered that very well. Yes, that is true.
And just to clarify, if I could quickly, when staffing, staff is reduced at the high school level, I mean, I know how it worked in elementary, it didn't work at the high school level, is that still done by seniority? So then it's not done by, based on programs that you want to keep, or it's strictly by seniority?
It is dependent on what the administration determines they need to cut. So similar to what Jim was describing, if they, the enrollment is down and they now need to cut a program because core has to be offered, then we would surplus out of that program or out of that content area.
Thank you, that answers my question. I believe we had a community member who had a question, had his hand raised.
That you love. Can you just clarify when you, with relation to delaying the need for high school number six? Is that, I think Dr. Finch said we'd be looking at building one in five years, so are we going to be able to delay it for 10 years and not need to build one? Or what's your timeframe on, you know?
So it would be outside of five years, so we have a planning window that, you know, in five years, we kind of know what our facility needs are going to be. It's outside that five-year window currently. And I think it'll depend, you know, a lot will change over five years that will help us reevaluate that every year. That's part of the study that Mr. Brammer helps us with on an annual basis, to be able to figure out if anything has changed, you know, either accelerated or decelerated in terms of growth of new houses or student projections.
So right now, what do you, I mean, based on what you have right now, what year would you be looking at coming out with that? Or do you know that? Well, can he answer the question, please?
Yeah, I keep forgetting.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
You need to say your name.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nathaniel Miller, Nate Miller.
If we could get that written down, that would be awesome.
Sorry, I thought you were going to answer the question. Sorry. Yeah, I mean, can you like, because I know like five years, it could be five and a half, but I'm just curious, like if you guys are telling me like it's going to be 10 years, that feels better to me than hearing it's going to be 5.6 years, you know? That's, I mean, but you have, you're basing your answer off of some number.
Yeah, right, right now, it's outside of the five-year window, and it's probably, you know, and, and we also, the last bond that was approved by voters was a five-year initiative, and it's not included in that. So in order for us to even consider a high school, we would have to seek the funding for that. And if we don't get any support from any other agency, it's going to have to be fully funded from the taxpayers of our district, which would require a bond authorization, so a vote of the people. And that, we have not planned for that to happen in the next five years. So right now, based on the projection that we have, it would be more than five years. If you're asking me to pick a year, I can't give that to you.
Seven, eight.
Mr. Miglerino, to your point, Mr. Miller, I think it might be helpful to provide some historical perspective from the district because in 2000, I believe it, four, three, four, when things were booming, houses were, house prices were going up, building was going like crazy, this district, I think, had a projection for a school to be built in the Stetson Valley area. There was lots of talk about some new schools. And so if you could explain some of the other factors that have to be considered, because unfortunately, we all don't have crystal balls.
Right.
There are a lot of other factors that get considered, so if you, if you could help, I think that would provide some more perspective to this decision.
Certainly. In fact, if you go back that far, 2002, 2003, the school facilities board actually awarded us high school number six. They thought we were going to have to build it. That's how fast we were growing as a district back then. And they ultimately, when the SFP funds a new school, they give you initial money to go hire an architect and do some of the due diligence that's required to even secure the land and, and all the necessary professionals associated with building a school. They actually allocated those funds to us, and then we had to refund them back to them because they thought in 2000, 2003, that we, that we were going to need a high school. So things change over time, and the recession that hit, especially the housing recession, things will change. That's why we commission a study on an annual basis to reevaluate that. So right now, it's not in our planning stage for the next five years, and every year, we will revisit that.
Okay, thank you. And just, I have one other question, which is on a completely different subject, and this is more like a personal one for me. So does Deer Valley give a preference to in-district kids for open enrollment versus out-of-district kids?
The policy as it exists now, no. Both in-district transfers and out-of-district or non-resident students out of our boundaries, overall boundaries are given equal opportunity to apply for open enrollment.
In my thought, we just should look at change, I think we should look at change. I think that'd be a lot. Because, you know, we're supporting the bond initiatives, we're in, you know, we're in the, we're in the group, you know? So, okay, that's, thank you.
So to that point, it would be helpful to know if we have accepted, what percentage of open enrollment applications we have accepted, if we've been in a position of having to deny in-district applications because of more than, too many out-of-district applications, if you get what I'm asking.
I do understand what you're asking. Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to run a report that looks like that. Our system, it's an electronic system that's been created within Deer Valley, and it, to my knowledge, although I can check again, doesn't have that ability to know whether it's inside or outside without opening each individual application and looking at that field.
I'm not going to ask you to do that, but in general, do we accept all of our open enrollment applications unless there's extenuating circumstances like a long-term suspension or an expulsion? Do you know?
Yes, based on, if capacity, if there is capacity, it's based on first come, first served, and the only reason for rejection would be for those factors, qualification of application, discipline, attendance.
Okay. I would like to just ask too, if, back to what Ms. Frank had mentioned, about the availability of programs if enrollment declines? And you might not have this tonight, just to send it if you could. I want to know if Deer, if the boundaries weren't changed, and Deer Valley's enrollment did not increase, based on these projections, what type of cuts to staff would they be looking at? Or what type of offerings may be unavailable? I don't expect you have that right now. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board, Dr. Finch and Ms. Frank. My name is Sarah Holley. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that the J, if it's policy, JFB, which covers open enrollment, and all sister jurisdictions, Glendale Unified, Phoenix, Peoria, prefers their in-district residents in open enrollment. So right now, as it stands, Deer Valley Unified School District is the only school district in this area that does not provide preferential priority to their in-district residents. I feel like especially if we're going to be changing high schools, that isn't quite fair, especially as you ask us to approve overrides, which we have. The other issue, or the other topic that I would like further clarification on is, you said that the highs, and I don't want to, you know, obviously, you have your agenda, and I apologize if I'm jumping the gun, but if at one point you can address why, if you're trying to delay the addition of another high school, why in your proposed boundary, you have reduced the size of Sandra Day O'Connor, and you're communicating with the principal about how you want to increase open enrollment at that school by 800 and, 800, let's see, I believe you said 850? Or 801 open enrollment size? And asked her to provide all of the faculty parking to those open enrollment students, stating that admittedly, however, the boundary changes we're proposing are intentionally designed to reduce the total school population on your campus, admittedly after several years due to high school boundary changes typically being phased in over time. This was, this was also in response to the principal stating that there have been an increase in student and faculty accident. So to have a campus where you have so many students coming in, it just seems a little dangerous. So I, yes?
Oh, don't lean into it, yes. Don't lean into it. We don't know what you're talking about. So if you could provide us with some context, that would be great.
Sure. I inquire, I don't, I assume this is open knowledge, but Mr. Miglerino, are you familiar with the conversation that I'm, I'm speaking of?
I believe it's an email exchange between Dr. Miller and myself, the principal of the high school.
Yeah, so is it true that in Sandra Day O'Connor, you're reducing the proposed size in order to create 800-plus open enrollment students, sponsored students? I mean, these are facts that you know or you don't know, right? And say, no, I didn't say that. So my question is, is, I would just like clarification, because if you're not intending to build another school, why are we setting the stage to, you know, contemplate that? These are the incongruencies that, as I look through the data, I keep, I've been saying, the data doesn't make sense to me.
Right, so the last bullet on the objective is to include consideration of open enrollment, what we call parental choice. And because Sandra Day O'Connor High School has a lot of parental choice students at that particular school, it does create, from a boundary standpoint, it does create the opportunity for them to have more open enrolled students at that particular school, and that school is also not landlocked. I mean, one of the issues that we're contending with, with Deer Valley High School, is all the boundaries are finite, by the way, but what I mean by landlocked is, it is completely developed. So we're not expecting any new development in the Deer Valley High School boundary area, even if you were to add the, in the proposed changes. So there's, the likelihood of, of, you know, growth being realized in the Deer Valley High School region would not, would not be expected. And so this allows for Sandra Day O'Connor to be able to handle whatever growth is going to happen in the region that they would be their new boundary.
So just.
Including open, including open enrollment.
Just to Mr. Miglerino's point, I believe the last large development that went into Deer Valley High School's boundaries would have been the West Glen neighborhood, which was built in the late 99, early 2000s. I think there was another smaller neighborhood of townhomes just east of 51st Avenue at Beardsley that went in maybe four or five years after that, but it is, you are correct, there is no other infill, there's no place to build any more homes in that general area. So I think West Glen was really in, unless I'm mistaken.
There's, there's a small infill project, I think, up 43rd Avenue, you know, north of Union Hills, but nothing of any size. So I mean, we're talking about 20 homes, you know, max. So nothing that's going to significantly alter the projections that we have, and any of them that have been through the permitting process, Mr. Brammer's already included them in our projection.
Okay, alright.
So my understanding then is that the proposed high school boundary changes that you're, that you're contemplating being phased in over time is what, what high school changed? What high school boundary changed? Because Barry Goldwater hasn't been affected, Deer Valley, you're thinking about increasing it on the, on the west side, and Boulder Creek has really not been affected because, as you said in the November, November, December meeting, that the decrease in, or increase in size with Boulder Creek were, were basically unpopulated area. So what high school boundary change is Sandra Day O'Connor supposed to be in a position to receive?
So their attendance boundary does change with what's being proposed. Currently, you know, and these are neighborhoods, I don't know if they're commonly known, but West Wing and Sonoran Mountain Ranch are currently designated to go to O'Connor, and they would be changing to go to Mountain Ridge. And so Sandra Day O'Connor actually gets smaller to be able to handle more open enrollment. The transition, or the, my comment in the email about it's going to happen over time is because of the transitional plan, meaning that all eighth graders that have signed up for whatever high school they have signed up for are already designated to go to that school, and their siblings would be also, you know, grandfathered, for lack of a better term, to be able to come in. So over time, you're not going to get the full impact of the boundary change until all of that transitional plan is realized.
So that wasn't contemplated to receive the students from Barry Goldwater?
I don't understand.
The growth of Barry Goldwater? I believe I have an email between you and Dr. Skip Brown, as well as Mr. Brammer, where the communication was that, that that was a good move because as Barry Goldwater increases, that would be a good spot for the Barry Goldwater increase to fold into Sandra Day O'Connor.
And that, that's happening naturally, so that's what this chart shows, is that, so the Nortera Canyon and Sonoran Mountain Ranch, those are the pie charts that are in the blue section, which is the Barry Goldwater attendance area. They're already electing to go to Sandra Day O'Connor.
Open or wrong.
They're open here. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said the other school that's not ours.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, it's ours, it's just not, I'm sorry, Sonoran Foothills and Nortera Canyon. I get those confused sometimes because they both are Sonoran. And this, this chart here actually provides that information. So the way you read this particular chart is that the, where the students reside are across the top, and where they actually attend down the columns. And so the, the note at the bottom there, there are 30 students that actually live in the Boulder Creek High School attendance area that actually attend Barry Goldwater. So you can actually see, you know, where a student attends and where they reside. And so currently, there are 305 students that live in the Sandra Day O'Connor attendance area that actually attend Mountain Ridge. And there are 378 students that live in the Barry Goldwater attendance area, but they actually attend Sandra.
Got it. So, so now I understand, because now it makes sense that Barry Goldwater, as it increases, as Mr. Brammer says, you need to make, you need to address that growth. Your contemplation is that that growth will be addressed by Sandra Day O'Connor, right?
Yes, and again, we're trying to preserve the consideration for a future high school that is, the site reservation that we have is at Joe Max and I-17. So we have a state land reservation for 60 acres in that region. That's not the perfect site for us, but, you know, somewhere in that vicinity, we'd love to see that's where high school number six would be.
But I thought there was also a site reservation on 75th and Joe Max, which is where the West Wing area, where there is an active growth, much more active than the, I don't want to take up all of the time, obviously, so I will sit back, because I really appreciate you being here. I do want, I did come just to study and understand, so, thank you.
I just, just to point out.
Would you finish?
The 75th Avenue and Joe Max site is no longer a viable site for us. It was part of a state land sale that transpired before the recession. It had, we didn't write this language, but the state land department did, it had a time-specific variable in what the developer had to offer to us. And once that, and so the developer bought the land, did nothing with it because the recession happened, and the time period ran out, they didn't have to offer the site to us any longer, so they took back the site, put more homes on it. And so we don't have a, a high school site at 75th and Joe Max.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donald Keyes, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, I'm a little late to the game. So, yeah, Donald Keyes, K-E-Y-S, yeah. So I'm a little late to the game. I did look over the October 14th, I'm sorry, the January 14th meeting notes of the board meeting. Who conducted this study? Was it, okay, you, so you've got the answers to this, to the study? So I just got a question. I'm, my background is I'm a career in technical education, former teacher, and I'm also currently a realtor. So I was looking at the boundaries, and just in general, they make sense to me. It makes sense to me that you guys are trying to balance out the. It makes sense to me that you guys are trying to balance out the high schools. Did you do any studies about future developments for residential along the three oh three up there? And maybe that's why you've got the Sandra Day O'Connor boundaries drawn where they are to where, you know, when that kicks in, you're going to either need that high school number six, which is fine in the future, five or six years, seven, eight, nine, ten, or you're going to allow the, because of where the boundaries are, uh, with the new proposed Sandra Day O'Connor boundaries, you're going to pick up all those new, uh, residents along the three oh three.
It's pretty much correct, exactly what you said. The thing is, is that with, especially with high school boundaries, is that you don't want to plan in short term and you don't want to move kids and then have to move them back. People really, really dislike that. And so I think what Mr. McLearyno is trying to do is protect the potential, you know, to have that sixth high school eventually, but in the, in the, in, and in the, uh, but eventually, as you said, that three oh three corridor is going to develop. Now, we just finished a project for the city of Phoenix where we got to understand the infrastructure challenges in that area, and that is not in the ten-year window.
Okay.
In any supplemental way, but down the road, if you want to make an attendance area for Sandra Day that will stick, then I think we've done the right thing.
Right. The only thing that I can see for a possible change is use freeways as a border. And I mentioned that to Dr. Finch before the meeting is like the three oh three, uh, is just use the three oh three or the one oh one or the seventeen as borders for schools. That's all. But I understand the point that you're making. I know a lot of people know, I might be in the minority, but I understand the point that you're making for the change of the boundaries to even out the schools. And a lot of people just don't understand the growth, uh, that's going to happen along that three oh three because there's going to be massive amounts of new homes built along that three oh three sometime, you know, sometime in the future. And if you just need to know our current real estate market, I just looked it up. In Maricopa County, we have around seventy-nine hundred single-family detached homes for sale. That's the entire county. We have about thirty-nine hundred under contract. It's all based on supply and demand. So basically we have a seller's market. We have a lot of people looking for homes right now. We have people moving in from California. So our growth is going to continue at a steady pace. It's not going to be anything crazy, but I just want to make the note that I understand I may be in the minority, but I think the boundaries make sense to me, uh, to change to even them out and just be aware that that three oh three quarter is going to be like the future. So that's it.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I guess, I guess my question on it, when I'm looking at this, I'm looking at the, the total for high schools and what was projected. And I only see, we're only going up from eleven thousand one hundred four students to eleven thousand five hundred eighty, um, from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-nine. So that's like, I think, four hundred fifty-four students. I don't have the number in front of me. And when I look at what's happening at, um, according to where students attend on that chart, Barry Goldwater, Boulder Creek and Sandra Day, I, I do see that even though, um, Boulder Creek's very crowded right now, I, I can see it declining over the next five years as well as Sandra Day. And I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just curious because it takes us like five years to transition boundaries. So you can actually look out because we grandfather people in where they're, why we're not sending more of, um, Boulder Creek, or more students from Barry Goldwater's boundaries to Boulder Creek or Sandra Day because four hundred and fifty-four students in twenty years, I mean, in my view, would not justify the construction cost of a high school.
Um, so you're right. That's one of the reasons why we're at least five years, uh, and remember, these projections are updated annually, uh, to be able to, a- and so they do change every year. So you can go back and look, um, that, that, uh, you know, if growth happens along that quarter and there's a lot of real estate, um, in these attendance boundaries that can be developed, uh, if they do get developed, uh, beyond what we know for, you know, uh, developments that are currently planned, um, then they, they will change the numbers. I- if the economy slows down and, and they don't, you know, they're not selling homes as fast, and that did happen in two thousand eight, um, then these projections won't even be realized. But the, the idea is the boundaries that we have proposed get us to the point where even at eleven thousand five hundred and eighty students, that we might not need a high school by then.
But why, why wouldn't we, I mean, because you don't want to be, I, I'm sure you don't want to travel around the community, changing boundaries again anytime. Why wouldn't we, I, I could see, because we know it takes five years to transition. So why wouldn't we at this point put a plan in place to disperse some of these students that are projected to go to Barry Goldwater over the next five years so that they're actually attending either, um, Boulder Creek or Sandra Day as they're declining. So you see more of a, because we know we have a five-year phase-in period. Do you see what I'm saying?
No, I, I think I understand your point. Um, and the, the sole reason for that is because the only s- high school site that we have, you know, dibs on right now, happens to be in that area. Uh, so again, if growth happens, it, it gets more accelerated, then we would, uh, we would need to consider a high school, um, and that's the region that we would put it in. So we actually have a concentration of students and the growth that would be in an area that would support building a high school if it were to be accelerated more than what we're showing in these projections. If it doesn't, then through open enrollment, um, there would be some balancing that's going to happen just because if, if one school gets too big, um, and all of these that were being contemplated here, uh, with the exception of Sandra Day O'Connor, um, are all within the, the numbers that have been at those schools at, at one time or another. So what we're projecting here is we can handle all of the numbers that you see in the projections for where they would attend. Um, and it gives us a concentration of students to have a plan in the future so that we don't have to change boundaries, high school boundaries at three schools or four schools. We might have to change high school boundaries in two or three schools instead of three or four in the future.
Can I just say, it's, it's really important to remember that the growth in this district is, isn't totally driven by market demand. The state lands department has such a hold on the available land supply that it's really difficult, you're like, I can't just project housing demand, this is seventy-nine hundred units a year or something like that, and then say that's how many houses are going to be built. The state lands department is to maximize return on investment of state land to the taxpayers. And so they are hanging on the land longer and longer and longer. And one of the reasons why those two thousand three projections didn't come to fruition other than the housing bust is the fact that they're managing the land supply very, very carefully, east and west of the freeway. East of the freeway, there, it's constrained between the new Taylor Morrison project and the rest of the world. And on the, you know, and they're, they're selling off small pieces at a time. And it's really constrained growth and it's also taking it out of, like I said, market demand. And on the west side of the freeway, even if the state lands department wanted to sell all that land, there's absolutely positively no infrastructure over there to support growth. So the city of Phoenix's position is that it ha- it will not start until a multi-thousand acre project can be originated in that area. And so what it, where it leaves us and where it leaves me as a demographer is with a cloudy crystal ball beyond about five years because we know there's the market demand to build more houses, but it's not a demand-driven supply. And it's really stretched out. It really makes what Jim's trying to do difficult. And because of the way funding formulas work these days, we're forced to be very conservative. So, you know, beyond five years, we could definitely see more growth than we're seeing now, es- especially in that three oh three corridor. But as of this moment, there is not a way to flush a toilet west of I seventeen on the three oh three corridor. And it's going to, it's going to take years for that to happen.
Okay, go ahead because you're, you're like leaning on your poor sore leg.
Um, my name is Jenny Gerster. I, I wanted, wanted clarification on something Jim had said about opening up the numbers at Sandra Day for more open enrollment. Was that correct? Like switching some of them so that you can have more open enrollment? You said eight hundred?
Um, I, I think that was in reference to an email. I don't remember the specific number.
You had said it tonight. I'm talking about tonight. You said that you were moving some people away from Sandra Day O'Connell, since, uh, O'Connor so that you could, you could have more open enrollment to have eight hundred, like, so that you could have more people be open enrollment since they already have a lot of open enrollment there and you wanted to make. I was just trying to get clarification on what you said tonight.
I, I don't believe I said the eight hundred number, but I don't want to argue with you. Um, what I will tell you, uh, and if I misspoke, I'll apologize in advance. These are the actual numbers, um, that, that, uh, of students that reside and attend at all the high schools. And so right now at Sandra Day O'Connor, there's, um, there are three hundred and seventy-eight students that reside in the Barry Goldwater attendance, current Barry Goldwater attendance area, and they actually attend the Sandra Day O'Connor High School.
Yes, you may.
So I thought that you had said that you were changing some of the people who were at Barry Goldwater, um, moving them away from Sandra Day so that you could have more open enrollment spots at Sandra Day.
And, and I think the point I was trying to make, I, I don't think, I, I think what you're saying is correct. I don't remember saying the eight hundred number, uh, and maybe I did in an email or something that I'm not recalling.
And if it's not the number, you're moving boundaries over so you could have more open enrollment at Sandra Day with the boundaries?
Yes, because that is what's happening with the current, um, choices that parents are making or students are making, um, that, that we're current, currently experiencing as, as indicated here.
So you want to be able to have more open enrollment at Sandra Day because choose, people are choosing to go to Sandra Day. However, if, um, the people inside the district are not given any preference, like they stated earlier, it opens it up to people outside of the district to come inside, which would help monies for the district. However, as a resident in the district, I mean, my children are graduated. It's not an emotional thing for me right now. It's just that I think that the people who reside in the district should be able to have a preference because they should be able to get there instead of just bringing in the people from outside. I do think that it is important to have a market so that you are bringing in people from the outside because it is more tax dollar money based on the students that are in here. However, you have people who are camped out to have a spot at Sunny Slo- or Sunny Slope. So their numbers are increasing because of the results of that school, even if the demographics are lower. So if all of the high schools in Deer Valley had the same type of ranking, then you wouldn't have a problem with allowing open enrollment at all of the high schools, right? Like wanting to increase the open enrollment at all of them because they'd all be ranked the same.
Well, we have open enrollment at all the high schools. The, uh, and, and the, a- and you can see here, there are ninety-seven students from outside of our district that choose Sandra Day, but that's nowhere close to both Mountain Ridge and Deer Valley High Schools outside numbers at, uh, two hundred and thirty-eight and two hundred and forty-five respectively. And the reason for that is they are on the, uh, edges of our, uh, of our district boundary. So they can attract students because of proximity.
Because more people would want to come necessarily from the south and come to Deer Valley because they can't get to Deer Valley because they're in a different district.
No, just because, um, Deer Valley High School happens to be within a mile of our district boundary.
Right.
So somebody that's, you know, a mile from the school wouldn't be in our district boundary, but they may elect to come to Deer Valley High School because it's that close
Closer.
and they may find it more desirable. That's likewise a similar case at Mountain Ridge High School. Uh, it's on the edge of our boundary. Um, so you can see there's a lot of movement within the district and there are some o- out-of-district, um, students that, that attend, but mostly those students are concentrated at Deer Valley High School and Mountain Ridge High School. Again, due to the proximity of them being.
The boundary.
Close to our.
A different district. So they're choosing to come to Deer Valley High School because they might live really close and they just want to jump onto that instead of being more south.
And, and because of the desirability of being at Deer Valley High School. Ms. Reed, did you also want to speak to this, uh, the point that we're, is being made?
Yeah, there were kind of, oh, sorry, I leaned, there were two points that I think kind of commingled a little bit. So I'd like to speak to what we were talking about with the Barry Goldwater versus Sandra Day O'Connor numbers and then speak to, to your point too. But I know that we don't want to have to move another high school boundary in the projection that we might have high school number six come on board. However, in the last five years, we've had one school community that will have their kids at three different schools. So, and that is within that Sonoran Foothills, Nortera community. So I, I understand it, but we already have a large group of students from the Sonoran Foothills, Nortera community who have, in essence, fixed our boundary issue on their own by choosing to open enroll. I think what the confusion comes to is because they have chosen to change that boundary on their own, which means that the district doesn't have to do it. There's some miscommunication in language that's happening amongst the district and the parent groups. So it would be, in my opinion, wise to look at, if we already have almost, you know, I, what was it, three hundred and seventy-eight students from one area that are choosing to open enroll at another school, then maybe we need to look at that boundary and let those students actually have real enrollment there rather than an open enrollment, that that's their boundary and in the, I guess, foggy crystal ball that we might possibly have a school because, you know, I live up there. We moved in two thousand and four and we were told we were going to have a high school and we're going to have a high school and we're going to have a high school and we're going to have. And, and I have sit on North Gateway Village Planning Committee. So I get the rezoning request and I understand the state trust land and the issues and, you know, all of those come through, through our group and Mrs. O'Brien sits on Deer Valley. So all of those go through her group as well in some of those growth pockets of our district. However, it, it just seems to me that if we were able to address some of that growth, then there wouldn't be, you know, it, it's a, it's almost a tit for tat. There's three hundred students that are opening, open enrolling into Sandra Day O'Connor and three hundred students that are opening, enrolling from Sandra Day O'Connor to Mountain Ridge. So people are already fixing our boundary for us. So I, I, it would just be nice if we could actually hardline fix it.
Well, you have that data because they're making that choice, but you don't have the data from the Arrowhead neighborhood because they're already slated to go to Mountain Ridge. So they, there could be numbers that want to go to, to Deer or to Mountain Ridge, but you don't know that because you don't have that data because that they're, that's where they're supposed to go. But you have that data that people are making a choice to go to another school because they're already making that choice, like you said.
Correct. And I'm not questioning the data. What I'm saying is that there's, that miscommunication that I was talking about was between the email communication of we want to open up these spots because these are the kids that are already going there and the perception that we are trying to push a boundary, um, change to, to switch students from one area to another when that's already, it's already happening. The students are already switching on their own.
But that could also happen in the Arrowhead area, but you don't know that because they're already slated to go to Mountain Ridge.
So I, I understand. I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing with you. I'm not arguing your point. I'm talking about the other, the other boundary and trying to, if we're going to look at solving all of the boundaries and, you know, high schools, so let's look at solving all of the boundaries for the high schools. The second point that, um, that I had was, um, as far as the declining enrollment, we were talking about, um, different programs and, um, you know, things like that. If we don't have numbers for something, you know, for instance, I was at, at work today and, um, a young man came up and I was asking him, I said, so what do you, what do you do when you're not at work? And, and he said, well, I was going to school, but I took a semester off. I said, okay. And he goes, well, I actually took a year and a semester off. And so we were talking and I said, well, how close are you to getting your AA? And, and he told me his credits. I asked him, well, where did you go to high school? And he said, I went to Barry Goldwater. I said, so you didn't take any dual enrollment classes? And he goes, well, ma'am, there, there aren't that many dual enrollment classes that were offered at my high school. And I said, okay. And he goes, and I wanted to take some AP classes, but they were all full. And so that's what happens when you have a population that's continuously declining is that we don't always have the, we can't always offer the programs. And that was one of the things that, um, a lot of the suggestions that were coming into us from the community was, well, if you offer this program and you offer this program and you offer this program, then maybe we can pull more students there.
Are those programs only offered if the people live in the district or if they come in from, uh, open enrollment?
It, it's open, it's open to anybody, but some are only if you go to that school. So like your dual enrollment classes, in a perfect world, we'd be able to offer all of the dual enrollment classes at all.
Outside.
At all of the high schools regardless. So. At all of the high schools regardless. So all five high schools would have all the same dual enrollment classes offered to them.
And they can't have them if they don't have the numbers?
Correct. They can't because
Of people living, not including open enrollment?
It, it, it doesn't, it's just anybody who's attending. It doesn't matter open enrollment. It doesn't matter if you, it, it's just total, total enrollment at your school. So if you want to have a dual enrollment English one-oh-one class, you have to have certain numbers in order to, for it to be staffed that way. And if you don't have the numbers and you don't have a qualified certified teacher who's gone through that program to teach that, then you can't have that class.
So you need more numbers in order to have those programs?
Yes, we have to have more numbers. We can't have a class of just five kids. That wouldn't, because We couldn't afford it. Because that would mean that we would have, we might have thirty-five or forty or forty-five kids or fifty kids in another section and that wouldn't be fair to those kids either. So
But they only have eighty-seven people coming from outside at Berry Goldwater? Like to make the numbers higher is what you're saying?
I, I think you're, I think you're missing my, my point is that in general, any school, I'm not talking about just Berry Goldwater. I'm not talking about Deer Valley. I'm talking about any school. We have to have students to fill the programs. So if we spend a hundred thousand dollars on a program and we only have twenty students enroll, that wouldn't be a good fiscally responsible decision for us. We can't have a program and not have any kids. So we can offer, so
Can't just be that program that's carrying the school. The rest of the school also has to be, um,
Correct. And, and you're familiar
Something that they want.
With the law of averages, right? So the more students you have, the better your averages are. And so it's, it's the same thing. The more students you have, so Mountain Ridge has more students. So when, when we do a test like, um, the AZ Merit or, um, the AZELA test, there's more students to pull from to raise those scores. When you start and you only have, like sophomores this year are the only ones who are being rated and tested. So if you only have, I don't know,
The average can go down if there's not as many people taking the test.
Yeah, then you only have two hundred sophomores versus you have six hundred sophomores. It, it's going to be harder for you to
Raise that average.
Raise that up. So what's happened at some of our lower enrollment schools is that they're in this constant downward sinking spiral that if we don't figure out something to do as a district and as a board and as a community, the next conversation we're going to have to have is, okay, which high school are we going to close? That's not a conversation that I'm prepared to have and that I want to have and I don't think is fair to the students at any of our schools. Uh, so that's why, you know,
So all of them need to be the same type of, um, I can't think of the word I'm thinking of. They all need to be looking the same so that everyone wants them?
It doesn't mean that they need to be looking the, the same. It's that we have to be able to offer programs at the schools and be able to fill them up. And what I'm saying is, we can't, we can't offer the same programs at every school. They're not going to be, they're not going to be filled up. We don't have the numbers to support every program. And that was one of the main, the main, um, comments that I received and the board all received the same is that, well, if you just put more programs at Deer Valley High School, it's going to work, but we don't have, we don't have the money in our budget to just add programs.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Ms. Frank?
So I have two things. Um, Dr. Finch, since the board is considering the open enrollment policy, um, would it be possible to draft a language for the board to consider giving, uh, in-district residents priority over out-of-district residents? And this seems to be a concern of the community. Uh, and since it is timely, we will be voting, um, on that policy at the next meeting. I would like to see, uh, some proposed language that the board could consider that would address this concern of the community. So that's number one.
Thank you. Number two?
Number two. Uh, so I, I've received a lot of emails regarding, um, that, the perception or the belief that Mountain Ridge and Deer Valley High School are not equivalent in terms of quality based on, uh, the A rating versus the B rating. Um, I, doing some research, um, discovered that, I think it was a year ago, both schools received the A-plus School of Excellence Award. And I was hoping that Dr. Galligan could perhaps provide some information on what is involved in receiving that award and how that compares to the A-B rating. And, and, you know, what does that mean to be an A-plus School of Excellence?
Certainly. The A-plus School of Excellence is a comprehensive school assessment that is done through the Arizona Education Foundation. And it is a, um, significantly robust look at a school as far as their climate, their culture, their scores, their teaching, their teachers, the classified folks that work on that campus, the parents that have their students attend that campus. All of that comes together in a, um, way that the school is able to share first initially in writing, um, with, um, the application process, but then also a visit from, uh, the, eh, Arizona Education Foundation with, um, people from across the state who visit the school, um, and then look to make sure that all of those areas within the school actually rea, reach a level of excellence that, um, that foundation can accurately endorse and say, "This school is a school of excellence who meets the criteria and should be celebrated and recognized across the state of Arizona." There are few schools who receive that recognition each year. And because of that, it is a highly acclaimed and well-respected recognition in the state of Arizona. Um, you are right. Deer Valley High School did receive that recognition in two thousand eighteen, as did Mountain Ridge.
So then looking at that type of an award, they are, um, interviewing staff, they are, um, evaluating, they're observing what goes on in the classroom. So they're looking at more than just test scores that students take on a specific date.
That is absolutely correct. Now, data, test scores, student achievement, um, student behavior, student attendance, all of those are factors as well, but they are one factor. And when we look at a comprehensive high school, we are looking at more than simply test scores, even though that is very important. But we are also looking at the experience a student has, the opportunities for, um, programs and courses that a student can take to further build their skills or build an interest in, um, an area they would like to go into with college or outside of college, just straight out of, um, high school. So we're looking at a comprehensive assessment, not just one component, which is what test scores are.
And how are the A-B ratings determined? What does the state take into consideration when assigning a school a letter grade?
So a, a letter grade is strictly related to a single test on a single day in a single year. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Galligan.
You know what? We can have the questions, but I'd like to move a little bit because we're at seven and we have an hour left. So Ms. Tweedy, ask your question while he's walking up.
Mr. McLaRino?
Please.
On the high school students' projections by school, where the students attend? I was just looking, starting next year and for the next five years, Mountain Ridge would be over capacity for the next five years and Sandra Day would be over capacity for the next two years. Can you explain that according to the capacity numbers on the bottom?
Yeah, so the, uh, School Facilities Board, um, uses gross square footage to be able to determine the capacity. And it's a, a simple mathematic formula based on how much building space is there. Um, it gets complicated because they don't, there, there's some space they consider to be invisible. So if we build something with bond dollars, they consider it to be invisible space. Uh, so we've built an entire wing, uh, at that school that's included in the square footage numbers, but not, uh, all of that is con, is considered in the SFB capacity. So I don't get too hung up on the SFB capacity. It just, it's, it's there to be able to give you some idea of what the capacity is. Uh, but all of those schools, in fact, Sandra Day O'Connor has well exceeded the twenty-three-hundred students for a number of years. Uh, so the SFB capacity is one measure, uh, but it's not the limit that would be accepted at a school.
Could you send us how many kids can actually sit in those schools, fit in those schools? Because it, it, just here it looks like we're sending kids that can't fit in a school. So it'd just be nice to know that they can fit.
Well, they are right now.
No, that, no, no, it's how we're projected for the next five years. It's showing that the number at Ridge is going up and that those students, we would be over two to three hundred students.
Yeah, we would be manufacturing that. The, the SFB capacity is determined, it's calculation done by the state in which they just use total gross square footage and divided by a number, ninety-four.
So we don't know how many students fit in any of our schools?
Well, we do, but they say, they say different because we have square footage that is not counted with School Facilities Board.
I, I just, I would like to know how many students fit in each school though.
And it gets further complicated at a high school because, uh, a student may not be there all day long. We have students that take a limited number of, of sections. We have, uh, students that actually take blended learning, so take online learning and, and classes with us. So
West Mac?
Yeah, West Mac classes. There, there's, it, it's, it's not a straightforward calculation.
So perhaps you could start with just sending us what the, um, square footage is of the buildings that are not counted within the, um, SFB's number.
Yep. And, and the gross square footage. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. That, that'll be good. Go ahead. And what's your name again?
Uh, Nate Miller.
I'm kidding.
N-A, no kidding. So first of all, I, I will say thank you for looking at changing the open enrollment policy for you. I mean, that would be fantastic. That really would. Um, second, Representative Frank, um, you educated me last meeting on, on Deer Valley High School. And again tonight, and I agree with you, but I think it has a perception issue that we need to address. And the nice thing about a perception issue is that it's just marketing, right? If that's the case, then, but that, that, as far as people coming into a neighborhood, you know, same with like politics, right? They see the B rating and that's about as deep as they go probably, right? So, so we got to do something perception wise. And I'm a Deer Valley guy, so, but I'm saying that, that's something to think about, how we can, how we can make Deer Valley, because I can tell you that from day one, if I had looked, because I was one of those less than intelligent people who looked at the rating, if I had saw a school there, I would have been like, well, you know, it's A to A, you know? So that's just a comment, right? And I guess the, the third comment is on the, the projections and the, the boundary change as a whole. So I would just recommend, there's, there's two ways to look at it. You can either do a small sampling change and see if your projections get tighter, which in my opinion, and I'm not suggesting this finally, but that would be, based on the numbers I saw, that would be a next seen west wing in and not moving the region south of the one-oh-out, one-oh-one out yet until those numbers get tighter and we say, "Okay, that really does look like we're going to be at overcapacity," right? But if you're doing like a revenue maximization model with out-of-district kids, I would suggest you guys only want to do this once. I would go big and deep. And I mean, I would not just move us over to Deer Valley High School. I would look at maybe shuffling part of Berry Goldwater down there because do it once and just go deep. Just kind of like if you're cutting people at a company, you know, you want to cut once and then make the rest of those people feel like they're part of a group. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to just clarify, uh, a couple of things. I, um, Mr. Brammer is actually very good. I didn't know how good until, um, earlier today. He sent me a projection, uh, that I said I don't want to include tonight, but, um, based on some of the comments, I think we will. Um, the, uh, um, Ms. Tweedy asked about exceeding the capacity. That's the current attendance boundaries, uh, would be exceeded where they attend. Uh, this slide here is the proposed attendance boundaries. And, um, you know, basically, uh, this would be the new boundaries, um, if the board approves the, what was proposed. I think some of the comments that were, uh, mentioned before, uh, about, you know, why don't we redistribute more students to other grade levels or to other schools, excuse me, um, especially in the, uh, just move them to a different grade level.
Some of those freshmen would really appreciate that. Just saying.
Yeah. Mr. Brammer
Wow, you are smart.
Did put, did put together a projection today that took all of Sonoran Foothills. Let me make sure I get the school name right this time. Took all of Sonoran Foothills and assigned them to Sandra Day O'Connor. Um, there's only, uh, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine of those students currently, um, two-hundred-and-eighty-six of those students currently, a hundred-and-twenty-five of those two-hundred-and-eighty-six are going to Boulder Creek. Um, so that would reduce Boulder Creek's population and increase Sandra Day O'Connor's population. And that, that, um, attendance boundary grows to six-hundred-and-fifty-four students by the two thousand twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So again, um, you'd have to make the adjustments here. That's not shown on, on this data here, but he has already done that work to be able to say, "Hey, if Sonoran Foothills, if you want to assign Sonoran Foothills to, uh, to Sandra Day O'Connor, um, that, that is a possibility." Or, um, alternatively, because Boulder Creek is also declining, uh, and forty-four percent of them are already going to Boulder Creek, uh, you could assign them to potentially Boulder Creek, um, and have that be assigned their boundary. Uh, again, if we build a high school in that region, it would mean that there would be a change for them, right? They would change from now to whatever was being changed and then potentially, depending on where the high school is built and what growth looks like, they could change, uh, again in more than five years from now.
Could you repeat those numbers, Mr. McLaRino?
So there are two-hundred-and-eighty-six student, high school students that are from the Sonoran Foothills attendance boundary, the new Sonoran Foothills attendance bound-
The new one, okay. Or the, the approved one?
The approved one as of a week ago.
Okay. That's okay. That's important. And then
And it will be, it grows to, uh, the projection is six-hundred-and-fifty-four high school students by the year two thousand twenty-eight, twenty-nine, which is the projection that we have.
Two thousand twenty-eight, okay. And how many of those students currently go to Berry Goldwater?
Currently, uh, twenty-seven point six, seventy-nine students, twenty-eight percent of them attend Berry Goldwater. And this is again, just from the Sonoran Foothills attendance boundary. A hundred-and-twenty-five of them attend Boulder Creek and seventy-two of them attend, uh, O'Connor. So more students in Sonoran Foothills go to Berry Goldwater than to Sandra Day?
No, Boulder Creek. More go to Boulder Creek.
The, the, the most goes to Boulder Creek, but I'm, what I'm, what I'm
But more go to Berry Goldwater than go to Sandra Day.
Which is their attendance
But it's very close. It's almost
Right, it's almost equal, right. But I just wanted to verify the, the numbers that you just
Seventy-five percent of the kids who live in that area don't go to Berry Goldwater.
Correct.
I would say, so I would say to that Sorry, I would say to that, we have some historic Boulder Creek kids because before Sonoran Foothills was built, all of the kids went to Sunset Ridge, which was a Boulder Creek high school. So you have these
Legacy
Legacy kids that are continuing to go to Boulder Creek that, um, because the first graduating class came over as seventh graders. So all of their brothers and sisters went to Boulder Creek, so they followed with that. So I think that as it transitions out and those kids, you know, continue to graduate high school, then there might be a little bit more of a change as Sonoran Foothills gets more rooted in being Sonoran Foothills rather than being, um, Sonoran Foothills Sunset Ridge, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Sarah Holley again. So the numbers that's stated there, it includes open enrollment students, right? Because it's, it's contempl, the actual figures are already realized. But in, in your applied economics study, uh, for the most recent one I have is fall two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it shows that Mountain Ridge had five-hundred-and-fifteen old students. So what I see is it is over capacity and it's been emphasized that it's apparent, I'm, I'm from California. We have open enrollment there as well. But the, it's my understanding that the legislation, uh, says if there is capacity. But what I have frequently heard during the board discussions from the DBUSD administration is constantly pressing upon, "It's the law." Yeah, it's the law. If there's capacity, you can't say you can't come in. But if you don't have capacity, I don't think Arizona Legislature is saying you must take somebody out of your district over your district. So when I'm looking at the figures here and saying, "There was five-hundred-and-fifteen open enrolled students that were out of the district." Yeah, I believe so. The number here says "out of the district." Yeah, I believe so. The number here says out of the district, attend and reside. So we accept the five hundred and fifteen students out of the district. And, and Ms. Reed was talking about historic legacy and, you know, peop-, I'm sorry. Oh, table twenty-one, page fifty-six of Applied Economics Fall two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen report.
We don't, we don't have that.
So, Mr. Braemer. Mr. Braemer, I have- Sure.
I don't, I don't have that report in front of me.
Okay, so can I?
You're reading this correctly, because in Mount Ridge, this year.
Okay.
There's two hundred and forty-five students from outside the district.
Okay.
Total difference between how many people attend there and how many people reside there is five hundred and forty-five.
Yes.
But only two hundred and forty-five of those are from outside the district.
Got it.
Balance of those would be movement within the district.
Within, so open enrollment, including out of district as well as in district. So specifically only out of district open enrollment would be two hundred and forty-five.
Correct.
Got it. So thank you for the clarification. But as we increase the added dis-, or as we accept people who are out of district into Mount Ridge, one of the things that I want to impress upon the board is, you know, we've talked about legacy, we've talked about, you know, let's use Boulder, Barry Goldwater as an example. People, as Ms. Reed has mentioned, they're historic, historic Boulder Creek people. They don't want to go because they identify themselves as Boulder Creek. You're trying to do the same with Arrowhead. You have heard throughout the last three months, one of the reasons why people are so impassioned is because they identify themselves as Mountain Ridge. I'm actually not one of those. I'm a recent transplant. For me, it's always been about the numbers, but you have people who identify themselves as Mountain Ridge and they chose specifically the neighborhood to go to Mount Ridge. The, this was an economic decision, a, a, a planned decis-, decision that a family made. So to think that we have anecdotal evidence at Barry Goldwater that you can tell someone to go to their school of residence, but they're not going to choose to do so, they're going to other places. What makes the current board think that when you tell Mountain Ridge Arrowhead people, you will go to Deer Valley High School? I may go, I, I may see my son, I have no idea, but what makes you think that they will go? Especially when they're being told you have to go, like they're told, you're forced to go. One of the things that we have, and since you're here, I would really appreciate some clarification on the numbers. What Ms. Frank and Tweedy, and I've asked multiple times is, is it possible to move the boundary of Barry Goldwater on the southern region? So south of the one oh one, that area as well, all the way over to perhaps, you know, the far east boundary. So it's south of the one one, all the way over to the far east region. And I was told by Deputy Superintendent, we can't, it, it really wouldn't address the enrollment issue at Deer Valley High School because the population is aging. But according to your demographics, map three, page eight of Applied Economics Fall two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen report, it shows that our Arrowhead area is also aging as well. So when you're providing an explanation, if it's supported by data or facts, I'm fine, but when you're telling me something and your data doesn't support it, because I see a lot of red in that area, then I wanna know, why can't it be done? And give me an explanation that I can actually understand. So question to you is, is it, what do you think about moving the eastern boundary of, of Deer Valley High School east past the Seventeenth Freeway to the far east boundary of?
Wouldn't you be over, over, going over the, the school itself? You, you would have Barry Goldwater, the school itself.
Oh, is Barry Goldwater south of the one oh one?
No, it's north.
Okay, then I apologize. That makes sense to me.
If you just can.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, that, that's not actually correct.
And if-
So Barry Goldwater, Barry, Barry Goldwater is north of the one oh one.
That's what I thought.
But, but, but the, the boundary, I, I think the point is, the K-six schools feed into the middle school. That's north of, uh, of, of the, uh, uh, it's actually right next door to Barry Goldwater, which is also north of the one oh one freeway. Um, so it's partly due to the, the middle school attendance boundary and the feeder pattern from the K-sixes to the middle school.
Okay, and to address the other, um, question you brought up regarding legacy, um, I, I think that this board did listen to the concerns about legacy and the directed district administration to develop a plan that would look at, um, how to address that legacy. So students, if it's approved as it was, um, presented at the last board meeting, current students as of August twenty twenty, who have any siblings of those Mountain Ridge students, as long as they attend Deer Valley Schools. From Kinder, you know, if they're in a current Deer Valley School at that point and they remain in Deer Valley Schools, they will be grandfathered into Mountain Ridge High School. So we did address the legacy concerns that were brought to this commu-, to this board by the community.
No, that wasn't the point. The point is, I said anecdote, I'm sorry. I, did I say something that was offensive? You rolled your eyes. Okay.
No, I just, you did say that, you did talk about legacy.
Anecdotally, when we looked at, uh, Barry Goldwater, it shows that, um, as Ms. Reed said, one of the reasons why they're not attending their schools is not because they don't like Barry Goldwater, it's because they identify themselves as, as, um, as Boulder Creek. So especially as you extend legacy and saying, okay, you are gonna continue, your sis-, are gonna go to, continue to Mount Ridge, that further entrenches the identity of Mount Ridge and that something is taken away, not, it doesn't make them, make the transition any better. So, um,
I misunderstood your comment.
Yeah.
Well, uh, so we are giving the opportunity for people to, uh, remain mountain lions. However, um, Ms. McCormick back there, uh, when, um, O'Connor was built and we went through the, I don't wanna be an eagle because I've always been a mountain lion. Um, it changes over time and it's not as much time as you think. There were people that stayed at Mountain Ridge, there were people that went to, um, O'Connor. There were people that went to Barry Goldwater that also had the opportunity, because the way the boundaries were, to then go to O'Connor. So some people stayed, some people left. Um, so because you say legacy, it does not necessarily, and it has proven historically, you can change from a, a mountain lion from child three and child four will be an eagle or, or a jaguar or a soaring sky hog or a bulldog. So, so with, with all that being said, with all the different programs we have um, that are exclusive to separate schools because of, um, that's where they, where they sit. Um, what we're trying to do, the whole goal of this is to distribute our students so they have more of an equity and resources, whether they be, um, human resources, whether they be academic resources, whether they be the amount of AP classes that they can take, whether it be teachers that don't have to teach six fifths in a classroom of forty kids as opposed to fifteen. Or maybe we want to have the opportunity for teachers to be able to sponsor clubs and to facilitate that. So that's the point of this. The point of this is not to, um, uproot families. What we're trying to do is build the community and make sure the decision that we make is going to be in the best interest of the students of our school. So, so that's where we're going with this.
But there's an assumption that the people that you are assigning to Deer Valley High School choose to go.
We're not, we're not making that assumption. What, what, the assumption that we're making is that a convenience would be a bus to get there, but we have open enrollment. So if you choose to stay at the school that isn't in your, in your home boundary, feel free to go to the other, which is great, because we, we love your kids no matter which school we have them in. But the, the presumption is that the decision we're gonna make is going to over time, uh, make sure that we're distributing our resources equitably to all of our students. So that's, that's the whole goal of this. How we get there is how we get there. And yes.
Yeah, th- this is quick. Um, so just for, since people have mentioned historical perspective, I believe the first homes in Arrowhead Ranch Phase One started building around nineteen eighty-six. Eighty-five, okay. Uh, two years before I moved to Phoenix. Um, trust the Realtor. And then, uh, Mountain Ridge opened in what, ninety-seven? Ninety-five?
Mountain Ridge was open in ninety-five.
So, um, I'm assuming we had students in Arrowhead Ranch Phase One before Mountain Ridge was built. Where were those students zoned for high school?
They had to go to Deer Valley High School.
Okay, thank you.
Hi there, I'm Lisa Best. Um, so I have, uh, children at Mountain Ridge and I have no say-so because they'll be graduated, but I think we need to do the right thing. So my question is, is transportation, I've asked multiple times. And I'm very concerned that we're promising transportation to parents when we don't have enough bus drivers. And I really don't think we have enough buses. So I just wanna know, have you guys done that transportation study? I know, like, so for example, if you're transporting kids from to Mountain Ridge and Sander Day, because you will be in the same neighborhood, you need double the buses, right? Or maybe not quite double, because some people bring their own kids or whatever, right? But you need a certain number of buses. You know, I don't know, I, I'm guessing there's about fifteen buses that go to Mountain Ridge. I see them, there's a lot. Okay, so say you need an extra five buses for every, you know, high school for all these changes. So have you figured that out, how you're going to do that? To me, I'm just not convinced. You know, if you have to do the boundary changes, I, I think it's fiscally responsible to change the boundaries versus building a high school. Just doesn't make sense to build a high school if you have one that's not, a couple that aren't full. But promising parents' transportation, I'm a little concerned about that, so.
Um, so we have enough buses, uh, but you're right, uh, we continue to have challenges, uh, filling the positions to drive the buses. Um, and there would be an added cost. Uh, that is why in what we were proposing, it is for a limited amount of time. So it's only through the June of two thousand twenty-two that we would provide the, the, the dual busing. And it's only in those areas that are affected. So if there are fifteen buses at Mountain Ridge, and I don't know if there are, but that doesn't sound, um, too far-fetched. Um, it would only be in the areas that are changing in which we have to run buses to be able to, uh, transport students from Sander Day O'Connor and, uh, Mountain Ridge for the, for example, the West Wing and Sonora Mountain Ranch, uh, neighborhoods, because they are proposed to change in, in the boundaries that we're, uh, at least sharing with the board.
I just think, I, just think about it when you're promising the parents to make sure that you're, you have a plan for that, right? Because if we can't even handle the buses right now, are we gonna handle them later? So that's just my, my feedback.
Sorry to miss this best point. Um, one of the, I've gotten a couple of times questions as far as for their junior and senior year, so years three and four. What if that student isn't driving and mom and dad don't have a way to get them to school? What, what would we then do?
Um, so they would have a couple of options. They could go back to their homeschool, uh, which would be a change for them, right? Because their boundary would have changed. Um, uh, we have other options, there are online options, there, you know, and what we suggest with people that, uh, any open enrollment, um, is that by the time two thousand twenty-two rolls around, um, there are carpool options and all sorts of things that are options. And we don't wanna necessarily suggest something that somebody's not comfortable with, but, but we, we find that where there's a will, there's a way. And, and most of the time, there are a number of options, uh, that, that take place. And we understand that not everybody, you know, you know, gets a car gifted to them as a junior, right? Um, just because they might be old enough to drive. Many students don't even elect to get their driver's license these days. So, um, but there are options that are available and they, some of them are fairly creative.
So kind of on the tail part of that, um, I know that parking permit issues arise. So for our students who would be juniors and seniors who would be transporting themselves to finish out their high school career at the high school that they started, would there be some sort of guiding principles or guideline to help them ensure that they get a?
You know, I think, um, we can talk about that at a point in time when we make a decision, because we're not even halfway through this, so, um, you have to wait, mister. There is someone standing here and, and
I'll be quiet.
No, you don't have to be, and he wants to talk, so.
Well, I wanted to check with Jenny's comment about Arrowhead. They were in the eighties, Arrowhead Phase One, but then the homes in Arrowhead Phase Two were in the nineties, which is why Mountain Ridge was part, they had to help. Mountain Ridge was in the nineties, right? And Arrowhead's Phase Two, the neighborhood that a lot of them might be from, was built in the nineties, which is why Mountain Ridge had to have, they had to have another high school because it was busting at the seams. But you were correct in the fact that the other ones in the eighties, Arrowhead Phase One, the original Arrowhead was Deer Valley. But the new development was in the nineties, which is why they were going to Mountain Ridge.
Thank you.
Jim, you can hurry up. I mean, speak fast, like, no, like you do your little font that we can't read.
Um, really, the, I, I mean, most of this we've already covered in some way. So I, I mean, I'll go back to just make sure that we drive home the point on the objectives, um, you know, uh, just so that there's some clarification. Uh, a- again, trying to create economy of scale, uh, so that they, the school's gonna operate efficiently and then include the consideration of open enrollment. We, we do operate in a very competitive environment. Um, and we try and make sure that we're honoring that for the students, uh, that, uh, you know, make a choice for, for whatever reason, to go to whatever campus they may, uh, elect to choose. Uh, we already covered the attend versus reside. I, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, uh, because we were able to receive the interim report, uh, there's been some confusion over, um, you know, when we were looking at the projections in previous presentations, it was all based on where the stu-, students live. And then you had to kind of extrapolate, uh, information about what was happening with, with, uh, the choice that was happening. So I just wanted, the distinction here is these are the current attendance boundaries for the attendance area. So these are where the students actually live, uh, current boundaries and proposed boundaries. Um, and, you know, just, I made some notations here to just kind of i- illustrate that, uh, with the proposed high school boundaries, there would be eighteen hundred and nineteen students that live in the, uh, Deer Valley High School boundary. Uh, whereas, uh, back in twenty twenty-one, we only had thirteen hundred and fifty-eight students. The reason that they have over fifteen hundred students today is because, um, they have over two hundred students from outside the district that are attending their school. Um, so again, just where they live, eighteen hundred students, uh, in where they live, plus two hundred students would put them over two thousand students um, for, uh, for, for next year, if all those students, uh, continued there. Again, um, I think somebody mentioned that we don't know the pattern that's gonna happen with the boundary changes because it's, it's not in place. But again, this is just where they live. We then extrapolate the information, uh, based on the pattern that we see to where we think the students will actually attend. So we call that the projections by school. Um, and, and so we have to do where they live first and then, uh, look at the patterns. Um, and then we determine actually what the projection was gonna be. Uh, it's, I, I just wanna make sure to point out here, um, um, that the, the, due to the amount of time that we had to put all this information together, we only updated the projected numbers here. So the actual numbers did not change. Uh, so you'll notice that when you look at the, uh, information. Uh, when we've shared this information in, in, in the past, we've actually updated the actual, as if it was, uh, that way e- even in the past, even though it wasn't. But, but in this case, only the projected data is changing, and that's the note that you see there. But here, where we would, uh, see that there'd be fifteen hundred and sixty-eight students in the current attendance boundary for twenty twenty-one and only growing to seventeen hundred, uh, just over seventeen hundred students by twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Um, and, uh, if the boundaries were left the way they were. And, and again, that's assuming all of the, if, if nothing were to change in terms of the patterns that we've seen in the past, um, that's how many students, uh, would be at Deer Valley High School. Um, if the boundaries were to change, um, they'd have almost seventeen hundred students at Deer Valley High School, uh, for, for next year. Again, assuming everybody was to move, um, which-
Just the freshmen.
Just the freshmen.
I did one year per, 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 one grade per year, so I assume nobody really moved once they went to school.
Ma'am, sorry, correction. You, you started with the- Ma'am, sorry, patient, you, you started with the freshman and then bumped it up every year. So you're, you presumed that all the cur.
Seniors would not move.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
But then it does grow to two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven students by the twenty-eight, twenty-nine year. And so what we're, what we're seeing, you know, out to the twenty-eight, twenty-nine year is twenty-five hundred students, twenty-five hundred and eighty students at Berry Goldwater, twenty-one hundred and sixty-eight students at Boulder Creek, twenty-one eighty-seven at Deer Valley High School, twenty-five ninety-four at Mountain Ridge, and then Sander Day at one thousand nine hundred and eighteen students. So just over eleven thousand five hundred students by the twenty-eight, twenty-nine year.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a quick comment that.
I need you to say your name first.
Sandra Gutierrez. I think that you're looking at people, there's a little confusion because on this legacy issue, because the concept is being presented backwards. It's not that the homes have gone to Mountain Ridge since the day the homes were built. It's that they're the first, they were the first class of Mountain Ridge. So the community has gone there since the day that Mountain Ridge was built, not the other way around. Do you know what I'm saying? Okay, so that's why it's like not quite making sense. It's that they're the, they're the first community for Mountain Ridge. Not that Mountain Ridge was the first school for the community. Okay, it's backwards.
Jim, you have anything else you want to share?
The, I, I just, the, the boundaries here, just again, I think, again, nothing has changed here. And we can toggle through this to see that the, really what's changing is the, what I would call the northwest portion of the Sander Day O'Connor boundary is going to Mountain Ridge. This, and the southwest portion is being assigned to Deer Valley High School. The far eastern portion that you see changed to green here, there are no homes there. But if the McCown four-eighty project does, does happen, the boundary change that the board approved now has that area assigned to Desert Mountain. So all the Desert Mountain kids would go to Boulder Creek, so that this is a conforming change to the elementary boundary changes that were approved on last Tuesday.
Councilman Tomachoff, would you like to speak?
I would like to, Lauren Tomachoff. I'd like to, I, I had to step out, so I apologize, I didn't hear the rest of the conversation. But Ms. Frank put out a proposal, a suggestion of allowing families that are in district priority for open enrollment. And just wanted to know, first of all, my property taxes, nearly sixty percent of my property taxes go to Deer Valley Union High School District. So I would think, I mean, I understand the open enrollment money question, but also families living within the district, nearly sixty percent of our property tax is going towards the school district. So I would hope that that would be something that you would consider, because we are, more than half my, our property tax goes towards supporting the schools. And we, I think everybody here has been very supportive of the schools and voted to, I mean, Deer Valley never has a problem passing a bond. So you have a very supportive community here. Secondly, I'd like to know, have you, have you, or could you look at these numbers and this analysis based on preference for Deer Valley residents? Because these are numbers based on open enrollment, does anybody, but what are these numbers going to look like if you? Because some of the families are making choices based on the fact that they can't go to their school of choice because they're at capacity where those numbers probably will change. Because, for example, I don't know, what's the, the, I don't have the numbers up there in front of me. But the school that has the, the highest number of students, eventually, you know, the, the seniors that are on variance is going to open up, open up room for more students. And then the, the families that want their kids to go to that school that have priority that are in the district, will that even any of that out, or have you even been able to study that? Thank you.
So to, to that point, again, this assumes the pattern of the past will be continued into the future. And whenever we make a boundary choi, a, a boundary change, you know, there is a chance that that, you know, that will change based on whatever the boundary change is. So it, it's probably fair to say that because of the comments that we've received regarding Mountain Ridge, I think it would be fair to say that the Mountain Ridge open enrollment applications would increase if the proposed boundary.
To that, to that point, then, Mr. Miglioreno, the chart that you have up there now and the numbers associated do not include outside open, non-resident open enrollments, correct?
Uh, no, they do include, they do include.
Everything's in.
Every, everything that we would expect those student, or to, every student that we would expect to be at that school, both in district and out of district.
Including the out, out of district students, okay.
Pardon me? You may make one suggestion, since you said one.
Yes, I would just like to, just ask for maybe some discussion from the district's part in an board update as to if there are any guidelines or best practices that our high schools use when accepting open enrollment applications. So just to help kind of spread some of that around.
I think Ms. Moffett could probably answer that right now. That's what you do, right?
It is. They follow policy. Their policy indicates that they can review an application based on discipline history and on attendance. And then if they later find that the application has been falsified, they can look at it at that time. The other thing that they review is capacity, whether or not they have the room for the student at that time. So each high school, this would be true for any location, high school or elementary. Each administrator looks at the application, reviews the application, and can accept it or deny it based on capacity, based on the student's discipline history, based on the student's attendance record. If either the attendance record or the discipline history is concerning to the administrator and, and meets the policy, they can deny the application at that time. If they don't have capacity, they can deny the application at that time. But then we review their decision to make sure that there is indeed a discipline history or we agree that there is not capacity or attendance as well.
Yes.
Lauren Tomachoff again.
Yes, it's you. We recognize you.
So I, I guess what I'm, what I'm wanting to know is, does, is there a policy? Or is, does the board have the ability to amend your, or is there even a willingness to amend your governing doctrine to allow preference for students within district?
We just said that we're going to look at changing a policy.
Okay.
Changing our policy to that. What Ms. Moffett was referring to is what we do at the present time.
Okay, so you're, you're, yeah, at this point, you don't know whether you have the ability to change that?
We do have the ability.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
It's on the, if you don't mind, it's on the agenda for the next meeting. We just previewed the policy, some changes to the policy. And then Dr. Finch indicated that district would be providing the board with additional language that would give district, in district residents preference, because that was not part of the preview at our last meeting. But it is slated on the agenda to be voted on.
I appreciate that. I won't, unfortunately, it's a conflict with the city council meeting, so I won't be there, so, thank you.
To, to that point, could we also get in Friday's update, the, I think, some additional background information on why Deer Valley, because clearly we're doing things differently than our neighboring districts. And I wonder if there's some background information about that.
I think Ms. Moffett can answer that right now.
I can answer that now. Since we have owned this process, it has not been different. I don't have the, the point in time in which it would have changed. But we have always, over the last six, five years anyway, treated both resident or in district transfer students the same as external.
I, I think, well, I don't think, I know that you're asking why. Why, why do we do that? Because we always have room for everyone, or what? I think we're looking for the rationale behind it.
I don't have a point in time when the decision was changed, so I don't know the rationale. It has, it was discussed earlier, and whether it would be changed, except the, the request was reverse. Would we put priority to the external? And the answer at that point was for the same reason everyone here is arguing, is that, well, that wouldn't be very honoring of the loyalty that our internal offer us. So they were put in policy as equals, and it became first come, first served. As a practicing principal, when I was a principal, I did not give priority status one way or the other at that time, too. It was first come, first served. So I really don't know a point in time in which that policy was changed.
I think we can make an educated guess, a crash is probably, we needed every student we could put our fingers on.
Okay.
So that's why they, I'm assuming that's why they made that change. That's what a super tenant would do.
It's possible, we didn't have a capacity.
But we don't truly understand why we did that, and that's fine, but I, what I would like.
We could probably find out based on the date.
I would like to further, okay, I'll come back to that, sorry, I've lost my thought.
Nate Miller, and I, what I was just going to say is that I think it might have been because of that, or just, I don't know if it really, that much matters in the past. But now that capacity may become an issue for your in district students, I think it's an important rule to kind of change. And then just on a quick note, so you make, just a comment, just so you have all the information on numbers. I think in two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, there was a hundred and twenty-one students that went from Highland Lakes to Mountain Ridge. So, and I'm guessing that's kind of our area that was there, just so you have it. I don't know if you guys have had the whole economic, applied economics report, but.
Thank you.
So you have a number, I'm done.
Oh, I, can I? I do remember my thought, right, because I know that we are looking at this issue January twenty-eighth. Is, how, how would that impact? Because one of my concerns is with our open enrollment, whether they are resident or non-residents, our current policy, the grandfather's U N. So if my, if I open enroll my kindergartner to Highland Lakes, I don't every year have to bite my nails and worry and wonder if my kindergarten gets to stay at Highland Lakes or if I have to go back to my home school. And, and this is a point I, I've brought up to you in changing the policy, again, next week, is that you've talked about putting that in guidelines. And so I still am concerned about that, but both for our resident and non-resident students that we do need to be cognizant of potential unintended consequences if we take students in. And whether it's as a kindergartner, or a fourth grader, or freshman in high school, where, where do they fit if we're going to start? Are we going to continue to grandfather them in and then look at current residents, you know? So there, that's a consequence I would want evaluated when we're talking about that next week.
When you, when you're accepted, yeah, we keep you, and we don't move you back out. So if you're already a student, we are probably going to make them, I think Mr. Miglioreno and I had talked about it too. We're probably going to still do the paperwork, but if you are accepted into Highland Lakes as a sixth grader, you're going to keep going there. We're not going to tell you to leave.
Okay, and, and that paperwork part about having to do it every year? One of the reasons that, that was written into policy when we changed it last time was to cut down the redundancy and extra work and stuff. So if we're, if we're going to add that back, I don't, I don't want to.
No.
I don't want to create additional paperwork. I want us to be streamlined, and I want our parents and our children not to have to worry.
I'm referring to the Mountain Ridge scenario.
Okay, that's all I'm, just want to look at those.
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Twitty.
Well, well, to Ms. O'Brien's point, I guess that was my point in saying. It's important for us to know how many students the high schools hold, because we're already projected over enrollment. At Mountain Ridge started next year with these adjusted numbers. So to promise people open enrollment and to consider an open enrollment policy, we need to reasonably understand that they can fit in the school. But also I wanted to ask Dr. Brown, what type of analysis did you perform in addition to the demographer to arrive at these recommend?
What I did was to be, in fact, a consultant. I worked with this, Mr. Miglioreno and with the demographer. And we would take the data that he provided, and we've met on several occasions trying to flesh this out. There, there are many different iterations we looked at as we went, did the pros, did the cons, and came back with a recommendation. So my, 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 my role was more as a consultant, not, not as a staff member, but as providing information as to what made sense. You're looking like I didn't make any sense.
So you're convinced that this is the best option for our district?
I'm convinced making a decision that makes sense is a good option. We try to put, and this is, this is, this is Skip speaking now, and not, not the district or anybody else. Sometimes we put too fine an edge. We're talking about the numbers of kids over a ten-year period. And that, and there's so many, so many differences that could happen. We need to look at the best thrust, what's likely to happen? How do the neighborhoods fit? And how do we bring together? And trends, and I think this has done that very well. But trying to say there will be two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight students in the year twenty twenty-eight, that's, that's, you know, maybe there will be, but possibly not. So I think we need to get the best thing that makes sense with the data we have. And then just each year we update it, and each year we clean it up.
Did, did we follow the same analysis procedure? First student arrived at?
The only other district I've done this kind of work in was next door in Paradise Valley. And we, we, only time we had to do it was when we're building new high schools and building new schools. We did boundary adjustments as we opened new schools, because you got to do it if you're opening a new school. We didn't do boundary adjustments because we didn't need to at that time, but still during that go-go-growth time, we're, we're building, I guess, one year we opened three different schools. So we didn't have to do this kind of work. This is very unusual, where you're taking existing high schools and making the boundaries make some sense. And the elephant in the room that Mr. Riglino has mentioned is, when is that high school six get done? That's, that's an extremely difficult, time-consuming, and expensive proposition. The longer you can push that off, the better, better off the district will be financially for the kids and everybody else. Once you decide in this room, say, gosh, we're going to build us a new high school, even if you say let's get up as quickly as we can, that's like a five-year process. So doing this kind of work allows you to look at that, to take a look at, well, what happens if we suddenly have to go to a new high school? Where is it going to go? What will that boundary look like? And believe me, the boundary adjustments or putting together for a new high school is about a million times easier than what you're trying to do tonight.
But are, are you thinking this is our best option based on everything you saw?
Yeah, the, the numbers I've run, I, I know people get nervous about open enrollment. I look at capacity, and, and your question about how many kids fit in the school is an interesting question. And it's hard to understand the answer to that, because a lot of times it may be driven by the cafeteria in a high school. You try to do scheduling in a high school with one lunch, man, that's pretty bad. Two lunches, now we're getting something that's evil. And if you get a big enough school where you're having three separate lunches, I mean, the first lunch is practically brunch and trying to get the rest of the school together. So what is the capacity? When do we have too many kids for the restrooms? When can't we park our cars? When can't we feed our children? And that's, that's a slipping scale that the professionals at each site can answer that, and they do that. I've had a chance to meet every principal in this district. I've been very impressed with their ability to pull things together and do things. I've seen some amazing stuff, so it, I'd like to say it's an exact science, and these numbers are exactly what they're going to be, but I wouldn't believe that.
Do you think there's any other analyses that need to be done, or do you think this was thoroughly analyzed?
I think it's, I think you, actually you've got two of the, two of the best people that I've worked with ever, and that's Mr. Berman and Mr. Miglioreno, taking a look at this stuff. It's, it's not, the data's not going to change. You could have somebody else can look at the data, but the fortieth day attendance of this school district is the fortieth day attendance at this school district no matter what. And you can look back over many, many years as they both have. So I don't, I don't doubt the data, I don't challenge the data. I just, my cautionary note is, it, it's, it's just data.
Well, so, I'm guessing, I guess the reason for this question is, is when we've looked at the demographer's report in the past, he's extremely accurate on predicting the overall student enrollment. But our school-level data has not been as accurate. So I don't know if we're missing some factors that we should be taking into account or to see if we're missing some factors that maybe would predict the enrollment at some high schools better, if there should have been other regressions done, that, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Aggression probably wouldn't do it for you. Unquestionably, we're missing things, but that it's, it's, what, who's it saying? It said you can't know what you don't know. And so you only have to take the data that's in front of you. And you can take a look at it, as that one chart shows, here's the kids that go to that school, the number, here's where they come. The rest of this campus is made up by children from these different places. That's probably a really interesting chart, because it gives you an idea of the, of, if we have migratory type things, and we have a hundred percent retention at a given school, that's amazing. We don't. Sometimes it's a drop as low as the sixty-eighths or seventy percents, some of them over the ninety-eight percents. But that's all based on open enrollment, and that's based on parental choice, which I think is incredibly important. You, as a parent, in my mind, are in charge of your child's education, and you're going to put him in the best possible place you can, and therefore open enrollment. This district's been very open, with pun intended. This district's been very open, pun intended, uh, with the open enrollment, it's good. And it's, it's, it's a useful thing, but the, the downside of open enrollment, I'll let Mr. Brimmer do onto this, is you don't know what someone's going to choose. It's parental choice, and the choice may be now, or the choice may be later, you don't know that, it's hard to predict that. You can only use the data you have, and then try to project forward as best you can. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just was curious if you thought there was anything else we could look at?
The work that's been done here is, is extremely solid. I think, I think, back in the old days, those artillery, we had something called, uh, if we registered the guns, you had to have the shoot hit data and the dead hit data, so you'd know how you adjust the artillery. Same thing should be done with this kind of data. Let's take a look at what he predicted, and then in the fir, one of his boards, in the fortieth day meeting, we'll see how we did, and then we can learn an awful lot from, you know, making that kind of adjustment. But I think the way he's done it right now is, it's about as good as you can get. I don't, sure, having a better crystal ball than him is how, uh, how we give you better data.
Ms. Frank?
So, um, Doc, Dr. Brown, when you say this is a recommendation that makes the most sense, could you please articulate for the board and the community, what in your view about this recommendation, um, is making the most sense for us as a district?
Well, if you look, if you take the, and I, and I'm not a fan of the capacity listed by the school facilities board, they're simply square footage as they know it, and it's, all, all we can say is it's wrong. But what it is, it's, it's, it's adopted by the state and becomes kind of a benchmark for us to work off, at least talk about, whether we're above that number or below that number. And if you take the proposed, um, uh, boundary adjustments, and you then say, we're withdrawing open enrollment forever, and you must go to the school where you live, you do not have a choice. And frankly, if you're going to do some kind of study, that's the only way you could really, if, if people move all the time, you can't get very accurate. I know that's not good, yeah.
We're not going to do that.
But if you were to have done that, if you look at where students live versus the new capacity, the new boundaries drawn, you'll see every one of those schools, except Berry Goldwater, uh, be, is below school facilities board's capacity. Berry Goldwater goes over in twenty-one, twenty-two. The likelihood of us following that rule, I know, is zero. It's less than zero, it's, it's evil to even speak it out loud, but if you look at the design and the process that's gone through it, uh, if, if it were a, an automatonic society where we're going to force people to go places, that's clearly the best solution. Numbers-wise, not for families, not for parents, not for patrons, but for numbers, that would work best. You're looking at me like I'm crazy, you're probably correct.
I, I guess what I was asking is, when, when you look at the boundary recommendation that's before us, why did, how does this make sense for the district to adopt? What, what, you talked about pros and cons, what, what do you see as the pros for the particular recommendation that's sitting in front of us? Because community members ask us as board members, why did you vote for this or not vote for this? And it's, as a board member, it's important to understand, everything has risks, benefits, pros, cons. So based on the recommendation you presented to us, why did you choose these boundaries? I guess is what I'm asking.
And, and we have seven minutes left, I'm just pointing that out.
I'll talk fast.
You don't have to talk fast, just make sure it's all in-
I'll be as pithy as I can. Uh, I think we looked at, the, the notions were to solve the problem first, as, as to cross-leveling, then we got through that. Then we started looking at major, and as I mentioned today, at major arterials. Uh, if you, if you somehow split a boundary using a freeway or something like that, it can be clumsy. Sometimes it's accepted because it's the way it is right now, and they don't want to change it. So we looked at disruption to communities as best we could, and I will say, the tip of the hat to Mr. Miglerino, he knows as much about the communities in this district as I've ever seen. I wish I'd been that smart when I'd been in his job in another district. Uh, so we, we meant to take a look at that, because we want to honor that, because we do understand the notion of kids and legacies, or what are you going to call them, can't come in through the system. Uh, we, we looked at the least disruption we could, and, and that's what brought this, this to mind. We also understand high schools are a different animal. This is where, where you've got serious money tied up with Justin's or Balfour, you've got kids that are really into this, and it's, it becomes difficult to move between high schools, because yet, you know, yesterday's enemy could be your mascot today. So we understand those things, and so we looked at that as well. And this, this does about as good a job, I think, as doing that as any other, any other options. If we, if we ask Mr. Brimmer to pull up all the different boundaries and Mr. Brimmer, you're going to find a number of different maps, doing different things, and this one, because of those things I just said, was probably our choice.
It's Sarah only again. Dr. Brown, I just have one question, and that is, given the data we actually do have presently, is there a need to make this decision to move around high school, uh, boundaries, um, because there's a compelling need now to address? Or are we moving around boundaries in anticipation of addressing a problem we think may occur based on projected, predicted data?
Probably answer to both of those questions. Uh, one, uh, this boundary move will solve some issues in terms of capacity at the high schools. This will have fewer years of over, I hate to say overcapacity, people immediately read that, that kind of, they're overcrowded, but I'd say overcapacity by the school facilities board standards. Well, it will have three, three fewer years throughout the district and during this projection of overcrowded, and the overcrowdedness is less during that same time. So it's better all for the students during those high schools in terms of having fewer children. Uh, sometimes those, those overcrowdedness goes, gosh, it's up on the, almost five hundred people over, that's, that's an enormous number of kids on a, on a high school campus. So we looked at those things. So this, this particular recommendation will mitigate that, it won't solve it, because it's, it's just the way the district's laid out, it, there's, it won't solve it, but it'll mitigate it, and that's, that's kind of what brought us to the conclusion. And Ricky, you want to talk to that?
Well, I just wanted to say, I just wanted to say that in the shorter term, you know, the way I see it is that we have a high school that's underutilized to the point where we can't offer the program that we want to offer at Deer Valley. We need to put more students into that school from somewhere. The other thing that's happening is that from eighth to ninth grade, if you have that transition slide that has the percentages, if you look at the West Wing and Terramar attendance areas, we're losing in that transition from eighth to ninth grade thirty to forty percent of our students to Peoria. And so, you know, we're basically killing two birds with one stone in the short term, forget about projections. In the, in the near term, we're salt, we're getting more kids into Deer Valley. It'll take five years to actually see a lot more kids into Deer Valley, because that's the kind of time it takes to see a change at a high school. But we can start that process now, you have to start it at some point.
But that's an assumption, yes.
Other side is to, to better serve our families in the West Wing and the Terramar areas, who are simply too far away and not attached to the Sandra Day O'Connor community. It's just real simple to me.
I understand, but I also under, I saw the, the presumption, the assumption that as you assign parents, that they will go, because we have, for example, in Arrowhead-
It'll take years.
We have Peoria Unified School District High School, which is closer to us than Deer Valley, I believe than Deer Valley.
Excuse, excuse me. Yeah, we've got like two minutes, is there anything you want to wrap up with, Jim?
Um, I just want to-
Please wrap this up for us, I love to say, Jim.
Yeah, and I don't want to belabor any of the point, we did talk about Arrowhead Ranch Neighborhoods and the number of students, and maybe, you know, looking at other alternatives. Um, you know, we had that information that's contained in the, in the presentation. By the way, I'll, I'll, I'll make a point to note that, uh, this presentation has been loaded on the Boundary Twenty-Twenty website as well. Um, that, here are the details, uh, been, this has been modified slightly from what we looked at a week ago with the elementary, uh, only to just include the high school, but the transitional plan is also included in here, that has not changed, uh, but that would be also developed to be able to honor the siblings as, ha, have been discussed. Uh, we have the matrix to be able to identify, you know, when somebody's going to what school, what is their home school, when, when that change would happen, uh, that has not changed, and then just that this is going to be formally considered at the next board meeting, which is a week from today.
Dr. Finch, you have like one minute.
All right, I just want to thank the board for, um, for, in going through this, many exercises, the many exercises that we've gone through, and obviously the community keeps sending us hundreds of emails and, uh, spending time with us, giving their thoughts as well. Um, I'll, probably the biggest kudos, um, goes out to Mr. Miglerino, this, he spent hours upon hours upon hours analyzing and re-analyzing, and then working with Dr. Brown and Mr. Brennan. Um, without Mr. M, this would not have come together, period, period. So I just want to thank Mr. M for, um, all the effort he's put into it, I know he's been, um, down this trail a couple times.